Good evening, everyone. I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of October 13th, 2020 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
The United States of America and two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, a lot of background noise.
Yep. If anybody's joining by two devices, you're going to have to mute one of them.
Okay.
What is that?
There's the bird. Sounds like a wheel.
Chris?
Yeah?
Can you get rid of that? Thanks. Anyway, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, I want to call the meeting to order. The Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment and Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Centrica Business Solutions and Kumali Granite Company. Resume and continue the hearing on a petition for an amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and an amendment to the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance and map filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Suite T through W, Hanover, Maryland, 21076, and Kumali Granite Company Incorporated, 15 Franklin Street, Westerly, Rhode Island, 02891, for property located at Zero Chase Hill Road identified as a portion of Assessor's Plate Two, Lot 73, and RFR 80 Zone. The application is filed in accordance with Section 16 of the zoning ordinances in town of Hopkinton as amended, which was heard on September 28th, 2020, and continued to October 13th, 2020. The applicants propose use of this site as a limited-use commercial site for the installation of a ground-mounted solar array. The proposal to utilize the portion of the property in question will require approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment from low-density residential to commercial and a zoning map amendment from RFR 80 to commercial special. Applicants are present. Joel, I guess you want to start off and then call any particular witnesses that you feel you need to?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Great. Thank you. As you know, we were continued from the September 28th hearing where we presented the landowner of this property who detailed the current and historical uses of the property. We presented the project engineer who detailed the site plan and conceptual engineering of the site, and our land use planner who discussed consistency with the town's comprehensive plan and principles of zoning. We also heard comments and concerns from this council and three members of the public. The primary concern was with respect to the eastern portion of the array closest to the Pocatuck River and Pollicoon Bridge. In response, our team spent the last couple weeks since the meeting diligently working to relocate a portion of the array away from both of those features. The amended site plan submitted in before you tonight shows the relocation, moving the eastern portion down into the quarry and away from these features. I will let Jason Gold, who's on the line, discuss the exact measurements on the amended plan. Jason will also note the significant forest that exists of approximately 800 feet between the array and the river, which will continue to buffer that portion of the site. Moreover, he will point out, and as the plans show, the topography slopes significantly upwards from the river and bridge to the array. Both of these will entirely screen the proposed array from view from the bridge and the river. Once again, and we intend on being brief tonight in answering any questions as they arise and any questions the council might have on this, but I want to briefly reiterate the unique nature of the site we have here. It's a commercial site. While it's zone residential, it's already accessed by commercial and industrial traffic and contains nonconforming uses, which will be abandoned if and when the project receives all of its approvals. I do want to note an email circulated to all of you today from the Hopkinton Pistons Alliance, which seems to emphasize and request the denial solely on the basis that the town has already approved a certain amount of acres of property for solar. I'm sure this goes without saying, but that can't form a basis for the denial of this project. I would submit that before you tonight and on the 28th as a good project at a site already being used in a commercial and industrial manner in a residential zone. Moreover, we believe the amended plan shows no detrimental impact to features this council and certain members of the public were concerned about. If there are any questions for me, I can turn it over to Mr. Gold, who will go through the amended site plan with you.
Okay, Joel, that sounds good. Do you have any questions for Joel? Scott Bellhurst has a question. Joel, for you, I guess.
Good evening. Scott Bellhurst, Vice President. Since we do know that there is buried, and that's in the proposal, where it was a former junkyard, I'd like to, would you be willing to have the Department of Environmental Management sign off on the property and that there's no concern from their perspective, from the state of Rhode Island's perspective, on any contamination on the site and it would be accessible and permissible to have a solar array on that site?
So, good evening. Good question. So, I will, I briefly mentioned, I think, the last time that my client doing the due diligence and Phase One study at this site, to the extent that anything shows up, that will move them into further studies. And that would trigger a conversation and reporting to DEM and open the conversation with them. There is no other, there's no mechanism to just reach out other than the testing that's done if and when that shows up with something. I can guarantee you that any licensed company that does those studies has mandatory reporting requirements if something shows up. So, that will in turn trigger DEM to come out there. It will trigger certain reports to be submitted, depending on what shows up. We can't just submit unless it's with a, you know, and if it's a wetlands application, obviously it goes before DEM, but there's no mechanism for us to just say, hey, look at this. But I will tell you that we are in that process of testing and due diligence at the site. And to the extent that anything comes up, that we will work with DEM. We have to work with DEM, so.
What type of soil samples have been taken in that vicinity as far as any potential contamination, like could be oil or any other chemicals from vehicle pots? I think that's a legitimate question.
So, the Phase One study goes through historical uses at the site, anything on title, it will examine any DEM records, any restrictions on the site, and do some, I believe it is preliminary testing. It's at that point whether it triggers into what's called a Phase Two. They do a site visit as part of that Phase One. So, that's the components of that Phase One. Some sites trigger into Phase Two, and that's when reporting comes up. So, I think that's when the heavy testing, any testing would be done would be a Phase Two. But this is kind of the common process as to how these sites and any due diligence on the, on any type of site like this, and really any, any site that requires financing goes through.
I'm going to withhold any other comments or questions I might have till later. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Anybody have anything else for Joel? Okay. All right, Joel, I guess we're ready for Mr. Gold.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes, yes.
All right, great. Thank you. I will be presenting the presentation plans that were submitted, hard copies last week, and they're also found online. There's a link on the town website on the homepage. The file that I'll be referring to during the presentation, the link is referred to as Kumali Solar TC Presentation 2020-1009. I think the easiest one to skip to is the second sheet in that set. That's the colorful, the colorful sheet, the drawing P1. So, as Joel had mentioned, we changed this quite a bit. At the last meeting, you had asked us to look at pulling the eastern end of the eastern array further back away from the Pollicoon Bridge and the Pocatuck River. You were looking for about 600 feet from the river, which would put us to about the point in that parcel. It was about maybe half of the eastern array. We took that even further, and what we did is we eliminated the entire eastern array and instead extended the western array south. And that pulled the edge of that array nearly 900 feet from the river, so much more than we were asked to do at the last meeting. What that does, it pulls it away and it also topographically pulls it away from the river in that direction too. So, not that there's any, not that there's any concerns. My part was stormwater runoff making its way to the river. That was a question that was brought up at the last meeting. So, being pulled over to the west as it is, there's no stormwater runoff flowing directly to the river. This new layout has a decrease in the fence area, a slight decrease in the fence area by nearly half an acre. The limits of disturbance have been decreased quite a bit by almost 20%. It's been decreased down to 11.3 acres, which is about 2.6 acres smaller than the previous concept. And the clearing also has been cut by about a third. It's been decreased by about 2.8 acres. Switching over to the next page, the last page in the set titled P3, what we did is we heard that there were some concerns about the visibility from the Pollicoon Bridge and the river. So, similar to the profile we presented the last meeting from Chase Hill Road, we did a similar one from the Pollicoon Bridge. And if you're looking at P3 on the right-hand side, you can see the Pollicoon Bridge in the aerial photograph, and it's labeled there. And also in the profile on the right-hand side, the Pollicoon Bridge is labeled. What this shows is the 800 feet of woods between the clearing and the bridge, even more to the array. And also the topography. So, you can see, looking at the topography, that fat green line, that's the ground, you can see that the sightline from the bridge to what would be the top of the fence is actually obstructed by the ground. So, even without the 800-foot of trees, the topography itself blocks the view of the array from the Pollicoon Bridge. And this is also demonstrating, in addition to the 800 feet of woods between the bridge and the limited clearing, there's also roughly an 80-foot or more elevation difference. So, between being pulled so far away and with the topography between the river and the array, as well as from Chase Hill Road to the array, as we discussed last time, this layout is really tucked deep into the property. You're not going to be able to see it from any direction. It's going to be, it's going to be a best-kept secret around town. That summarizes the changes we made to the layout, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, Jason, thank you. Who wants to, Sylvia has questions for Jason.
The, for the record, the size of the quarry itself, about how many acres is that? Just the quarry space?
I'm not sure how you would define the quarry, the...
Well, that's what you've referred to it as.
Well, the whole property is, I mean, it's operated as a quarry.
Well, there is an open space that you can see that's cleared, and that's where, that's where materials were, I mean, materials that you pulled out.
Yeah, so if you're referring to the, you know, the large hill that's currently being broken apart and stones are being removed from, if you want to give me a second, I can give you a sense of that. It's about 275 square feet. About six and a half acres or so. Pretty rough, rough measurement.
Okay, thank you. What are your plans for that six and a half acres? There were, I believe, panels that were going to go over that area, and you've pulled them back. What will you do to reforest or remediate the area where there was removal of soils and rocks and whatever? What are your plans for that? If there's no, if there's no panel there, what do you plan to do with that area?
The, have you, so if you look at the aerial, you can see that from the, the area itself is pretty wooded. So, areas outside the proposed array doesn't need any remediation. That's not, remediation's probably the wrong word. Revegetation, it's vegetated already.
Okay, so...
And then areas within the array, that will be loamed and seeded. Right, anything that's cleared for the development of the array, quarry or not, is treated the same, so that still needs to be vegetated. Is that the question?
Yeah, so, yeah, because I was looking at C1, and it seemed to be, there was an open area where it just, and I, and I mean, we all know what quarries look like when they're being mined. It's just sand and rock. So, is there going to...
It's not. It's...
No, 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 I'm not talking about your site. I'm talking about quarries in general, for instance, you know, in Westerly. So, you've referred to this as a quarry, so I think what I'm hearing from you is the area where there was a quarry, you're now putting panels and everywhere else it's either wetlands or wooded. Is that what you're saying?
Essentially, yes, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's not like a gravel pit, if that's what you're thinking of when you're...
Well, then what is?
It's a, it's, without being able to show you pictures of being on site, it's difficult to describe. It is a hill that is having material removed from it. So, the way that I think that you're describing it is a quarry that has been almost completely, completely used. So, you end up with this big pit that looks like a gravel pit, right? That's kind of what we had at High Street. This is a hill that is still being quarried. So, at some point, you know, in the future, if this were to continue being quarried, I think you'd end up with what you're envisioning, this big, open pit that's clear and bare and has, you know, nothing can grow there because it's been excavated so much. That's not the case here.
Okay, all right. Now, the first hearing that we had a couple weeks back, in the beginning, there was a statement made, and I don't have the transcript, so I'm not sure if it was Mr. Kumali or who made the statement, but at the beginning of the hearing, it was stated that the, that the quarry or whatever, I'll call it, I'll refer to it as a quarry, that it was still being mined, because I asked if it was being mined, and they said yes. Well, at the end of the hearing, I asked, at the very end, I asked, and Mr. Kumali did respond, and I asked, is there any equipment there? And he said, no, it's cleared. So, I'm hearing two different things. So, when was it last mined? How long ago?
George can answer that question. I know from being out there, you can tell that it's been recently, recently worked, but the exact date I have to defer to Mr. Kumali. Is he on?
George, if you're on, star nine.
I'm on.
Okay. Did you hear Sylvia's question?
The last time there was equipment was two weeks ago. We had an excavator up there. Prior to that, some active mining was done, I would say 60 days ago, then prior to that would have been about 18 months before that, when there was a demand from some armor stone, and David Benner moved it. Armor stone is the jetty stone.
Okay, that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Scott, did...
I would, I would just say, and I'm trying to take everything in and having thoughts going in my, through my mind, but I will say that a week ago, this past Sunday, the council president, Frank T. Landalpia and myself, visited the site. We did see the quarry, and we saw the Pollicoon Bridge, and when we were with George Kumali and his brother, David Kumali, and so I just think it's important for the public to know that at least, it was a week ago, Sunday, that quarry does have water in it. And I believe, and I'll stand corrected, but I understood if they still did do mining, I think they probably, I think I heard that they had like 10 more years of mining they could do there, and I could be wrong on that. But I tried to, I did tour that site with the council president a week ago, last Sunday.
Barbara?
Thank you. So, my understanding is that Lot Two is still considered in its entirety a quarry and able to be quarried for the specific kind of stone that you say is there. Is that correct, George?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
The stone is basically, I would say, the field is where the junkyard was. That's where, that area where nothing grows, that's where the Perry's salvage yard was. And then as you go south, the stone starts there and it goes, you can't really see it, but it goes up into a big hill, and they quarried it and they just stockpiled it. So, you don't, there's limited blasting, limited splitting, the stone's just laying there. You just bring an excavator in and separate it from the gravel and load it on trucks when there's demand for it. Currently, no demand.
All right. So, my question is that that gravel bank that I saw on Wednesday is indeed still an operational gravel bank? You still have a number of acres that you can gravel by legal, nonconforming right? And so, that property, if it has not become solar, can indeed be gravelled as you need for how many acres?
I would suggest...
Because you have that whole hill.
Yeah, there's, yeah, it's probably about 15 acres of mineable good stone that you could take there, and in the field we would stockpile it. We've actually, since being in the Westerly Sun, have received several calls from interest in contracts.
Right, so this is not...
That we've entertained at all.
So, the difference here is that it's not a big concave arc like High Street or 216. It's a hole right now, but it's a hole that comes down from the hillside, and the hillside is entirely gravel and can be quarried. So, you're basically taking the hillside out.
The hillside, Barbara, is basically large stone. You don't really see it unless you walk up into it, but it's where they just threw what they didn't think was valuable stone, which is now what they use for jetties.
Right, so you would quarry that and you can sell that. All right. I have, I have a couple of things. That's a good... When I want to reiterate Scott's comments at the beginning, I'm very interested in remediating this completely by DEM and Rhode Island, because it's a brown field and it's an auto junkyard, and I've seen it when it was covered with automobiles. So, I'm very interested in having that property completely remediated, and I assume you can probably quarry part of that. The second thing is the gravel bank will be no longer allowed as a grandfathered legal nonconforming use. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're going to annihilate the gravel bank, which is really quite substantial if you chose to, you know, as you continue to gravel it. And you're going to annihilate effectively the auto junkyard and the brown fields, which I think is extraordinarily important to the, to the river. And the third is, I'm also interested, and this is a George thing, on an easement, a land trust in perpetuity on the remainder of the property, which I think has been discussed, and I certainly hope will be, if we pass it, will be in the writing of the ordinance. The other thing is, George, you can probably answer this or someone can. I haven't seen any of the abutters that have disapproved this or disapproved. Have any, are any abutters opposed? Because we haven't heard from any.
Our biggest abutter would be the land trust, and most importantly, Mike Grills, who I see numerous times and discussed what his concerns were, and I believe his comment was he's in support of solar rather than a quarry.
All right. And so, in the other thing, the fourth thing I am interested in is in the future, I'd certainly like the land trust and you, George Kumali, and Mr. Grills to address the lots abutting the river so that we may be able to extend the size of the land trust parcel. It would be really beneficial for the river, be beneficial for the town of Hopkinton, and certainly for the animals, because they'd be able to walk all the way through. So, I'm interested in those four points.
From our perspective, we would not be object to a conservation easement over the property excluding the solar, and once the solar were to be abandoned, it would be all conservation. We wouldn't be objecting to that.
So, that would be something the land trust could develop into a lookout or trails or for mountain biking?
You wouldn't want to bike up that hill.
Well, I'm not going to, to be sure. I did see it. It was quite, it was quite impressive. And there, you have, part of that, a large part of that array does not have any trees on it. So, you would be cutting down a relatively small portion. Can you tell us how much? Maybe you're...
That'd be Jason.
Jason, you want to weigh in?
Jason? All right, I'm going to move on to another part of it. And then my understanding is that the access...
I'm sorry, I was muted by the, I was muted by the host. Sorry about that. Yeah, so to answer your question, how much, yeah, about half of it or so is already grass. So, out of the 11, 80... So, out of the 11 acres, within the limits of disturbance, only about five acres or so would be tree, existing trees.
Okay. And then, the access road goes all the way through Lot 1, 2, and 3. And so, I assume that's on the easement deeds for each of these lots. And there is no issue with Lot 1, because that would have the larger telephone poles on it. So, the person that owns that lot is, understands that he'll have the large electric poles, the utility poles, and is set with that. Is that correct?
I spoke with Mr. Grills, and he's set with it. He asked me to handle it a certain way, and I've agreed with him.
Say that again, George. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Mr. Grills understands that there's one pole that runs to his existing garage, and there'll be several poles going after it down to the facility, and I've agreed with him, and we've discussed that at length.
I also wanted to thank the engineer. The transformer is nicely buried in the array, or in the lot. So, I'm happy that it's away from abutters on all sides. I don't think there will be much of a problem with noise or sound, and there certainly will be silence and darkness, which is certainly a benefit when you're canoeing on the river. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay. Thanks, Barbara. Jason, you still there?
I am.
Okay.
I think.
Council President Frank, sorry. Yeah, what, on map P1, what does the LOD stand for?
I'm sorry, that's the Limits of Disturbance.
What is it?
The Limits of Disturbance. So, that's where the shade trees would be cut.
Oh, okay. All right. And then, I noticed, obviously, the triangle was removed and brought to further extend the salvage yard solar array. I guess, I didn't get a chance to add up the number of panels, I guess, but with the elimination of that triangle, or the, or the easterly array, and brought over to the larger array for the salvage yard, was there any panels eliminated in that process? I didn't have a chance to add them up and subtract them and...
No, it's the same. We were, we were able to keep all of them.
Okay. All right. All right. That's all I have for Jason.
I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Barbara has one more thing for Jason.
I have one more question, probably for Jason. Jason, from the bottom of the new array, the southern portion to the Pawtucket River, what's that distance? That would go through the Grills property, the distance?
Yeah. That would be, boy, probably over 1,000 feet.
Oh, it's way over 1,000 feet.
Yeah. I mean, the array to the river, yeah, you're looking at maybe about 1,200 feet.
That sounds about right. Thank you.
Okay. Any, council, have any other questions for Jason? Okay. Joelle, I think we're all set with Jason.
Okay, great. I don't, I have everybody here on, online. I don't want to repeat stuff we've already gone through. I think the carryover was really this change in the plan. So, I will, if there are any other questions, we do have everyone available. We have the client available, and the landowner, as you've already talked to him. We have our land use planner. So, everybody's here for questions. I don't want to take up too much more of your time repeating the same thing we did the last time.
All right. So, Scott, do you have any general questions for, and if you have any question, just state, you know, obviously, state your question, and then try and see if you can get an answer.
Just to comment, I did talk to my neighbor, Elaine Waldarone, who's with the River Council, and I know she was concerned about the, the previous configuration, and I believe she's going to call in tonight, and you'll hear her perspective. And I also talked to Marilyn Grant from the land trust, and somebody from the land trust is going to be calling in too, as I understand it. So, really interested in what other people think about this, and I'm also interested in some of the zoning issues on the non-conforming use matter, that element, and also, obviously, possible contamination at the site. And so, I'm, I'd just like to get as many answers. I know there's a lot of questions on this one because of what took place on this site, and also how we deal with so-called brownfields in the town of Hopkinton, and non-conforming uses in the town, and solar, which is a very hot item. So, there's a lot of dimensions to this proposal, so it's not as easy as a typical solar project. Thank you.
Okay. Scott, thanks. Sylvia, you're up.
All right. First thing is, we had received a letter from Attorney Roca dated September 23rd. It was the letter that was requesting Counselor Davis recuse because of her statements at a planning board that they had thought prejudged this project. So, I'd like to make that letter, that letter part of the record. And what hasn't been noted in any of your writings or changes to the proposal from the last hearing was my, I had stated that my, one of my, well, my major problem with the syrenza project that's on Chase Hill Road down near 216 was the road that exits Chase Hill Road, the narrow bridge, and how it is configured in that intersection that goes to 216. It had been, and so, I still have the same problem with this. It's just that you're even farther down the road. And I understand that you noted that you would be leaving, or exiting any trucks to 216, and you'd come out that way. I haven't heard anything on how are you going to relay those concerns, and I don't know how it's possible. You've got school buses, vehicles, obviously, and it had, someone had mentioned at the last, someone had mentioned at the hearing that on your, on your, on your team, that the, maybe it was the attorney, that it would only take a couple of months of construction, and that's, I don't know how that's possible. These projects take, take much longer than a couple of months. But even if it is just a couple of months, it's, it's, it doesn't work. And, and what you're proposing is exactly the sort of proposal that you'd want. You'd want to discontinue a use, just as it's in our solar ordinance. The problem is the road, and I don't know how you get around that. So, I, I can't support the proposal because of the narrow road, the narrow bridges, the narrow bridge, the way that it exits onto 216. And if this, if this proposal is voted in, in favor, at, whenever the council decides to make the decision, if it, if it is approved, I would, I would want the council to require the police department to be involved in public safety, even if it's to the point of having a police escort every single vehicle, because I think it's, I think it's highly dangerous, and I don't know how you resolve that problem.
Yes, Jason, or George, or Joel?
Yeah. So, the, the only comment that appears that this doesn't wholly matter, there was a whole conversation about this road, and the nature of this road, and some back and forth at the last hearing. So, I, I don't, I don't, I take issue with, with the characterization of it, but this is a road that already has commercial traffic on it. That was, that was stated loud and clear at the last hearing. These projects do only take a couple of months to, to construct. We're talking about the same commercial traffic that's already on the road. So, I, I, we can get into detail, which is typically done in the design phase, about that type of aspect, but again, near a commercial and industrial uses at this site, there's a garage at this site, there is commercial traffic on Chase Hill Road. You're talking about the, the construction traffic during those three months, during that three-month period, and then none after that. So, we do have members of the team on here. I'm not sure it's going to change Councilwoman's mind, but we can have that discussion and go into that level of detail. But I do recall a pretty significant discussion about the road at the last hearing.
So, I, I will also add that even if, even if not a single abutter is opposed to this, and everybody thinks it's great, there's still a problem with the road, and I, and I, I don't know what the solution is. Thank you.
Frank, I just want to follow up on that. I agree that Sylvia has a point. The entrance from 216 onto Chase Hill, from Route 3 onto Chase Hill, is wide and not a problem, but very shortly, within probably half a mile, you do get to the smaller road. I don't see why there would be any issue with asking for some form of police presence to make sure the road stays low, and that the smaller curbs are cared for, because you should know when your trucks are going in and out, especially in the morning. And it also will help address the school buses, because there will be a number of school buses on that road. I do think Sylvia has a good point, and I do think there's a way to resolve that.
And sure, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. We, I have no problem, we have no problem with a condition to work with public safety, if and when hopefully we get to a construction point, and coordinating that type, that, that type of stuff. I think we'll, we can contact them, meet with them, and go with whatever recommendations they come up with and requirements.
I think the, hold on one second, Scott.
I think that's, I think that's acceptable. We'll certainly look into doing that, because I do think public safety should be involved, especially in the morning and the afternoon school bus runs. And there is, that first property has a large parking lot with the mechanical buildings with the barns, that trucks can probably go in earlier than the kids come to school, or later, whichever one, and then have the trucks just in a line in a parking lot, rather than on the road. So, I'm sure there'll be something that can be addressed, but I, I do think public safety could be involved with, with very little difficulty, especially if it's only going to be a couple of months, which I think you can do.
This is perfectly fine.
Okay. Scott, did you have any questions for the group?
Yeah, I do, because I think the people of the town of Hopkinton, if you just take the history of solar, we've had people, Maxon Hill complain about thing, and we've had people of Palmer Circle. So, I think just from recent history in the town of Hopkinton, it would beg to question, how would this be different? How would this be different than what the town of Hopkins already learned with the Maxon Hill situation, which was approved by the previous council, by the way, and the Palmer Circle situation? So, it's very tough for the town, and nothing against the police, or the building officials office, or anything else, but you know, staff is short, and how can they stay on top of everything? Because even, you still hear complaints from residents about that. So, it is a concern, and you know, promise is a one thing, but we've had, I think people have more or less had expectations with all the solar projects in town, and they, they haven't had concerns.
Route 91 and 216 had very little problems. Maxon Hill had a lot of problems. So, I do think it should be addressed, because you can do it smoothly, and certainly, that would be something we would prefer. But if we're going to do it for solar, I would do it for all commercial construction.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, we've heard from all the council, I guess, right? Joelle, do you guys have any, any other comments before I perhaps open it up to the public?
We do not, and I, just to further emphasize that we have no problem with a condition to coordinate with public safety.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. Okay. I want to start with any abutters to the project, if there are any out there. Star 9 to raise your hand. All right. Yeah, with me here? All right.
Hi.
Hi, Sarah?
Yeah.
Hi, it's Council President Frank. Hi.
Hi, Frank, how are you? Thank you for letting me speak.
Are you an abutter? I guess I'm not sure. I couldn't...
I believe that the land trust isn't a butter. That's what was stated earlier.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, I'm personally in a butter. I'm speaking on behalf of the Hopkinton Land Trust tonight.
Oh, okay, sure.
Okay. So, what I'd like to point out, from the land trust perspective, we did submit a letter to this effect when we first heard about this project, is that, you know, we've had a longstanding interest in this property because of its proximity to the river, obviously, and the Pollycoon Bridge, and all of our, you know, interest there. And for various reasons, you know, we didn't pursue this past a certain point, probably a good 10 years ago, and some of those did concern the fact that there was an auto, you know, junkyard there, and quarry, and a bunch of things that were unresolved, and that we didn't feel were easily resolved. And while the land trust is not taking a position either in support or against solar in general, we do see this proposal as having a possible great benefit to the town and the people of Hopkinton in enabling the land trust to acquire access eventually to hopefully all of that land, and have greater accessibility to the river, and you know, there's a great peak up there that maybe we could incorporate trails into. And so, our interest in this property has existed for a long time, and if this proposal makes that more possible, we, you know, we're really interested in having a part in it. So, I wanted to state that, and thank Mr. Kumali for his interest in involving the land trust in saving the property in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay. Let me see, any more abutters? Okay, looks like we got Carol. Carol, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, you're all set. Yep.
Okay. I guess I have just a couple of comments. Counselor Kapalbo mentioned, again, that this was a brownfield site that she was interested in seeing remediated, and in the last hearing, this was clearly stated that this is not a brownfield site. There is no known contamination present. So, that is a mute point. And I would like to ground everyone back to the solar ordinance. The solar ordinance states that RFR 80 residential rezon request are not guaranteed approval, and that if we were to, you know, the requested coverage may be the lesser of 3% or 3 acres, and that the planning board, as part of its advisory opinion for a zone change, would could, may recommend an appropriate lot coverage to change that amount. In this case, the planning board did not do a positive advisory opinion, and did not, obviously, include an increased coverage amount over 3%, over the lesser of 3% or 3 acres. In addition, I think it's important to note that the definition in our solar ordinance does include the access road and all of the interconnection as part of the solar array. So, with those items not being part on this particular condo land unit, I think that is an ongoing issue. does include the access road and all of the interconnection as part of the solar array. So with those items not being part on this particular condo land unit, I think that is an ongoing issue. And I guess my final statement would be that I become dismayed that the land trust somewhat becomes self-serving on these types of items, that if they are to gain down the road, then they will support an item. And I just think that is not the right premise for our Hopkinton Land Trust. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Okay. Oh, I got Elaine, okay. Elaine, can you hear me? Elaine?
Yes, can you hear me?
Hi, it's, hi, it's Frank, how are you?
I'm okay, thanks. My name's Elaine Calderone, and I'm the Hopkinton representative to the Woodpocketuck Wild and Scenic Rivers stewardship council. And speaking for the river, given the first plan and the second plan, the second plan is far better as far as views from the Pocketuck River and from the Pollicoon Bridge. I appreciate Mr. Kamoli listening to our issues we had with the first plan, and for revising the plan and presenting the second plan. And I'd also like to thank the Hopkinton Town Council for their support and efforts in bringing about the plan change, and that is greatly appreciated. So from the river point of view, if there's going to be something on this plot of land, the second plan is far, far better. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Okay, let's see. All right. Harvey?
Hi, thank you. This is Harvey Buford, Conservation Commission.
Yes.
This is a property I've been directly involved for something like 15 years, back when this was still a junkyard, to remediate the site, to bring it closer into conformance with the zone that it was, because it was a grandfathered use. The, I certainly consider this to be a brownfield. I certainly have dealt with it as if it was a brownfield, meaning a place that had been an industrial type of use in the past. We don't know for sure that the property is totally cleared up. I can remember going there very happily, looking at thousands of junk cars piled three and four high, looking for parts for cars. The junkyard served a very useful purpose to the town. The Conservation Commission way back when was supportive of the junkyard there, but we had real problems with it because it was kind of old-fashioned junkyard. They didn't drain all the fluids necessarily at the point of entry, the way it should have been done. There was just a lot of issues that we had about what might be out there. The land trust, I think back 15 years ago, was, was making some efforts towards acquiring the property to the rear. It, it just turned out that Richard Grill stepped in with a million dollars at the right time and bought the property, and of course, he cleaned all the vehicles off of it. They did, I think, like a Phase 1 study. We haven't had anything done in more diff, in more detail. We don't know for sure that the property is totally clean. I certainly hope it is, but that has always been an issue for the land trust to be involved with a property that you're not sure what hazards you might inherit with it, and obligations along with that. So I'm very interested in the rear property, that's Unit 3. That gives us a lot of acreage and a lot of frontage along the river, which is a very high goal of the land trust, and for anybody interested in conservation. Really half of the rear unit of Unit 2 there, the, and this, the quarry there, is, it's, there's a small quarry pond, but basically the quarry is a mountain of granite, and so it's, it's not a hole in the ground, it's a hill. And actually, from the top, it's very nice views. It would be a great place to, for preservation. And just the history of the quarry, the cultural features of a quarry, could, could make for a very interesting viewing for hikers. So I just want to say that this is one of those areas that is, is a whole lot better than putting this, this amount of solar in a commercial space and taking away from where that commercial space should be, providing jobs in stores and shops and things that sustains our town. And this is tucked away, it's downslope, it's, it's not going to be seen by anybody from pretty much any place. I think it's a, it happens to be a good combination, if it's combined with the preservation of all of that river frontage and that hill. I think it's a huge win for the town. And, and solar, done right, and this is a place where I think it can be done right, and as opposed to many others, is, you know, we do have the issue of climate change, and this is something that would make a, you know, it would make a contribution towards stopping climate change. So I think it's a very positive thing. I think moving the solar back away from the eastern part, that wing that was over there close to the river and Pollicoon Bridge, we're not quite at the quarter-mile setback that the, that the Wild and Scenic Rivers group at Woodpocketuck is recommended, but you know, at 1,000 feet or so, you're, you're two, you're two tenths of a mile, so you're not that far away from a quarter of a mile. And I, so I think this would be potentially, looking at the big picture and preserving all of those lands, I think this, this could be a win for the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Harvey. Anyone else for public comment? Oh, I got one.
It's like you.
Yeah. Eric?
Hey Frank.
Hi.
Hi, I've got some comments and some questions. I'm just trying to pull up my notes here. Oh yeah, here we go. So first of all, a comment, and, and I guess a question. The town solicitor, as you know, has said on numerous occasions at previous hearings, that the only business before the town council in these rezoning hearings is to determine whether or not the requested rezoning is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and the town's solar ordinance, Chapter 246. The planning board in this instance has rendered an advise, an adverse advisory opinion to the town council that listed seven reasons why the proposed zoning is quote, "not consistent with the comprehensive plan." I might have missed it, but I don't think I've heard the applicant or the council for the developer, nor anyone on the town council, address a single one of these specific objections that was raised by the planning board citing reasons why they believe it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I don't understand what purpose it serves to get an advisory opinion from the planning board. It goes through that process only to have every single member of the town council ignore that, and also the applicant not address any of these objections, if that is the sole purpose of, of these hearings. I know that Counselor Hurst and Counselor Davis have both said in the past that they don't intend to act against recommendations of the planning board, but you know, it's troubling to have them completely ignored. So I don't understand why the state statute requires it, why our town ordinance requires it if we're not even willing to give these objections lip service, and I hope there will be time in this hearing for all of the counselors to address that. Secondly, the attorney for the applicant has stated that there are pre-existing non-conforming commercial and industrial uses at the site, but ground-mounted solar energy is not a pre-existing non-conforming use. It's not any right that exists. I think we need to be clear about that. The property is still zoned residential, so I don't think that we should be confused that there's a right to pursue that use. Third, if I'm reading the plan correctly, not counting the roads, Carol mentioned, there's some, some things that aren't counted here, but the total acreage of the fenced-in area is 11.3 acres. So I'm reading, and I think I'd like the town solicitor, I'd like to ask it through the chair, that the town solicitor comment on this, because I, I'm reading the plain language of the ordinance, and I can't get from point A to point B. The ordinance in paragraph 13, the PSES ordinance, Chapter 246, says, "If the parcel is zoned RFR 80 and the applicant is seeking to rezon the parcel, then the maximum requested coverage may be the lesser of 3% or 3 acres." Hard stop. That is the limitation in the ordinance. Period, end of story. Then you go down to the bottom of that paragraph, and we had a lot of discussion about this when you were writing and approving this ordinance, about how this would occur, and if the planning board was on board, that's the way this was served up, if the planning board found that there should be some adjustment to that lot coverage, and if the planning board recommended to the town council a lot coverage that was different than that, then we wanted, for this very purpose, we wanted the town council to have the latitude to consider that. So the ordinance goes on to say, "As part of its advisory opinion to the town council on a proposed zone change, the planning board may recommend an appropriate lot coverage for a proposed PSES based upon the unique characteristics of the parcel and in a manner that is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, with the intent to balance environmental and aesthetic concerns, as well as the rights of the property owner to develop the parcel." I just want to, got a couple pieces of that. Well, the property owner doesn't have any right to develop the parcel for solar development unless he gets a zone change, so that doesn't apply. This part of the ordinance does not say that the town council is going to consult the land trust, or Harvey Buford, or anyone else to determine whether or not they believe that the unique characteristics of the parcel merit any latitude. And likewise, the only party that is to be consisted on whether the unique characteristics of the parcel can be developed quote, "in a manner that is consistent with the comprehensive plan" is the planning board. So I don't see what I'm missing. I see an ordinance that says 3% or 3 acres, the lesser of, that's the ordinance. If the planning board had recommended something else, the town council could consider it, and if the planning board had made a recommendation that they also thought was consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, that could be considered. At the last hearing, I asked the council for the applicant if the planning board had done any of that, and if they had recommended anything other than this, this lot coverage, and if the planning board had found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the answer was no. So unless our, I mean, I can't, I can't imagine how, but I would like to find out, you know, if we're wasting our time on this, or if the town solicitor can divine some sort of mechanism that I don't see in the plain language of the ordinance that allows the town council to completely ignore the ordinance and just do whatever it wants. So could we settle that? Is that possible, please?
Well, we'll see. Eric, let's see. No, you wait one second, Scott, please. Kevin or Joelle, did you want to weigh in on any of those comments? It's up to you.
I, I'm, this is Kevin. I'm happy to weigh in. If you want to hear from Joelle first, that's fine, too.
Yeah, Joelle, do you want to?
Sure, so on the la, let's go last first. On the last point about this lot coverage and the 3%, I addressed this at the last hearing. The language is plainly, it's clear and unambiguous that the planning board may recommend as part of their recommendation to you on the zone change. They did not. That is now up to the council in the course of the zone change, because they just straight-out recommended denial. I don't see what we're even talking about in this. It's a recommendation anyway. So the fact that they just recommended denial and didn't recommend a percentage, I don't know what that does, because you're the body by statute that makes the determination on the zone change. To that, to follow up on that point, the, I'm, we didn't address, with this claim from Mr. Bibler, that we didn't address the planning board's seven canned and prepared reasons to recommend denial from the comprehensive plan. Here's what happened. And there was a predetermined list of why this wasn't consistent with the comprehensive plan, and what those were, were based on design issues, based on the location to the water body, all of which, some of which we've already even worked through at this level, and the remainder of which will be worked out at design review. So to, to suggest that, oh, it's too close to the river and it's going to impact these features, we've already discussed that. But before we could even get to that point, the planning board chose to recommend denial on a basis. What's before you tonight, and was on the 28th, and will be at a vote, is, is this location correct? That's the zone change, it's the map change, and your ordinance says such locations, like a gravel bank, brownfields, and landfill, shall, shall be consistent with the Hopkinton comprehensive plan. We're talking about citing here. And yes, we've gotten into issues about impact and visibility, because that goes hand in hand, and we have amended the plan, but that's what's before the, the council tonight, and that's what your ordinance does. So those are really my only comments. I can, I can get into the legal jargon about the 3% that I talked about the last hearing, but I, I, it really comes down to what Mr. McCallister tells you, so I'll, I'll let him have the floor.
Thanks, Joelle. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm not going to address, unless you ask me to, I'm not going to address the, the second part of what Attorney Rocha just responded to the question, and that is the seven reasons and why it was or wasn't addressed during this hearing. I'm not going to address that. With regard to the interpretation of paragraph 13 of the solar ordinance, I agree with what Attorney Rocha has said, and I would elaborate a little bit. In the sentence that Mr. Bibler accurately read, which refers to, I'm just going to re-read it again. Let's just put my glasses on here. The sentence he read is, "As, as part of its advisory opinion," that's initial caps, "advisory opinion to the town council on a proposed zone change, the planning board may recommend an appropriate lot coverage, et cetera." Well, as Attorney Rocha pointed out, the advisory opinion to the town council on this proposed zone change was negative, so obviously, the planning board could not and did not recommend anything about the coverage. And, and as you know, chronologically, under state law, the advisory opinion of the planning board is, is formulated and given to the council before the council considers rezoning the project. So chronologically, as Attorney Rocha implied, it comes, the project and the request for zone change and future land use map change comes to the council with a negative advisory opinion from the planning board, which is just an advisory opinion, not binding on the town council at all. The previous sentence to the one I just read in, in paragraph 13, talks about, "In the event the town council has rezoned a parcel to allow a PSES installation use, then the proposed PSES shall be referred to the planning board for master plan approval." That has the chronology correct. That has the chronology correct, which is the step after the council's rezoning if that's what happens. So as I stated before, with regard to Zero Main Street and another condition of the applicable, which was the prior PSES ordinance, the town council always has the ability to vary from an ordinance like this, Chapter 246, that is a general ordinance applicable to properties throughout the town, it always has the ability to vary from parts of this ordinance so long as it does not become, the departure is not inconsistent with state law or with the Rhode Island Constitution. The law is clear on that, that the council has that inherent power. So I'm just elaborating a little bit on the point Attorney Rocha made, but that is correct. And I put this, in my opinion, to the council that I sent last week, the end of last week, that this is the case. So yes, the council can expand on the lot coverage provisions of Chapter 246 if, as a condition to any rezoning that it does. It does have that authority. I don't think there's any question about it.
Okay.
Under state law.
Thank you, Kevin and Joel. All right. Any other questions from the audience that has not spoken yet? I don't see any. Okay. Any comments from the council? Further comments?
Yeah, I have.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Just to repeat what I said at the last hearing that we had for this proposal, the first hearing. If this doesn't fly, if you don't get an approval from the council and you intend to continue with the quarry activities, you have to apply to the earth removal ordinance. Other than that, it was mentioned about, I don't know, ignoring the planning board or whatever. When the town council has denied some of these solar projects, we just usually just say no. We don't even bother to get into reasons. We just, it's just a no, and that's okay. If it's a yes and the project moves forward, and even though the planning board didn't give a positive advisory, when, as part of the yes, all of the reasons that it adheres to the comp plan is noted, but just wanted to add those couple of things for the record. Thank you.
Thanks, Sylvia.
I agree. Barbara? Yeah, I agree with Sylvia. Because we've done a number of these projects, that when the motion is made pro or con, the comp plan is addressed in full for each of our opinions about whether it is appropriate or not. We have certainly been doing that regularly over the last four or five projects, and I doubt that will cease.
Okay. Scott, any final comments? Are you, oh, good.
Well, I mean, I just, we'll see how the debate ends up on this. How the debate comes up on this. Obviously, I play a great deal of attention to what the planning board says, and I think if you are an attorney, and I'm not an attorney, I'm a poly sci major in college, but I'm not an attorney, but usually if you debate a point that somebody makes, and in this case, the planning board, you would take every point that they objected to and rebut that. I know they're advisory, but they are, in every community, the leading land use board. The other thing that goes through my mind and is, and we got this thing that's signed by Mr. Nardone. I was looking for the date on it, but it talks about, and it says quarry brownfield. Well, there's a quarry brownfield, but I didn't see on here where it said about, you know, the buried automobiles. So this is the deal. A lot of times, things are buried and you know it's buried there. I mean, you know, you can just surmise if it's vehicles, it's probably gasoline, oil, or any types of fluid associated with, you know, automobiles or vehicles. Then, the only other thing that I like to say, because it's entered my mind, and I think it probably has entered a lot of people's minds, is that the previous council objected to the depot road one, and that was a landfill there, and you can't do much there. It wasn't totally a landfill, but that area, but it was a landfill, and we're talking about doing solar right off Canachia Road in that area.
Stubtown.
You know, Stubtown Road. I'm sorry, I called it Canachia Road, and it's Canachia, but Stubtown Road. So I have a lot of thoughts going in my mind. I would say that we know the position many of people in the town regarding further solar. I would like to acknowledge the work of Elaine Colerone and her concerns, which have been addressed, the interest of our land trust, and these people serve without compensation. And, but we'll see what the debate brings, and I understand the public sentiment on further solar. I would hope that people would address their concerns, how we deal with nonconforming use, that element, and also what we do with so-called brownfields. But also, you know, I'm just going to be interested in the debate, and I try to be a good listener and not only a good talker. I've worked on that. I think I probably talk too much in past times, but I'm trying to be a better listener. Thank you.
Amen to that. Just kidding, Scott. Barbara?
One of the things I wanted to make a point on is on the comprehensive plan. The solar array that was going to be at Exit 2 and the other large Maxon Hill one at Exit 1, I voted down, and I voted it down specifically because the comprehensive plan specifically states that Exit 1 and Exit 2 are commercial properties that are to encourage businesses and jobs. And I voted it down because that is the purpose of 1 and 2. In other areas, we don't have to worry about that as much, but we do address the comp plan every time we address a vote, yea or nay.
Thanks, council. All right. I guess, Joel, you have any further comments or you all said?
Yes. The only thing I will say, because it's coming up for the first time, is the seven issues that the planning board brought up. And I just want to briefly say, if you look at those seven reasons, it's often hard to respond to that because there's no, for example, the vote was, let's take one of them. It's not consistent with the intent for Hopkinton to be characterized by safe, secure, and attractive residential neighborhood, Goal H1. Each of these, there's no support underneath. So for example, for that one, we've talked about, it's commercial here, it's really at this point, hopefully years down the road, decades down the road, maybe residential is appropriate here. But at this very site, we've all talked about the nature of the site, and there aren't homes going up on this property. So we've talked about that, we've talked about it with the planning board. Another one is it's not consistent with the protection of the quality of life and rural character of Hopkinton. Well, I guess that could be said for any type of commercial use, but that's really, including a quarry and the commercial uses and industrial uses that are there. But that would prevent any of these projects from even getting out of the gate. I think what we've shown here, especially with the amended plan, is it's not going to be seen, it's buffered, we've taken comments, and this goes to a lot of the other reasoning, which again, don't have backup for them in the planning board's determination, but we've talked about the features that are significant to the town that are going to be still protected by this. We've gotten weigh-ins by the land trust, by the Wood Pocket Tuck, with, based on the amended plan, and I think that shows that these features will be preserved by the solar array as opposed to an existing quarry. It's not consistent with the preservation of existing farms, wildlife, and wildlife habitat. There's nothing in the record as to, this is not, in fact, what's in the record is this isn't a national heritage area. So that's all been addressed, and I think it talks that, you know, one of the other things is it's not consistent with the economic development goals related to reducing the town's long-term energy costs or creating local jobs. This is commercial special, it's designed for solar. Otherwise, it's a residential zone. So I'm not, anything, if you stick to residential on the site, you're not going to achieve economic development goals. So I think a lot of these are red herrings, but I do think the type, some of these goal NR1, it's not consistent with the preservation, conservation, protection of the significant natural resources of Hopkinton as an endowment to the future of the town. I think this amended plan before you goes a long way towards that goal, and I think that it does protect those features. I think that testimony has been before you, it's before you tonight, it's, the members of the public have weighed in on that. So I don't want, I didn't want to leave without saying we didn't address those, but I also wanted to call out with, it's hard to address them when some of them may be inapplicable or some of them, you know, took the, the conversations we've had with you at this level, and to come back with this amended plan, there was no conversation that happened to say, at the planning board, to say, hey, move it away from, we have these concerns, move it away from the river. It was just an automatic recommended denial. So I appreciate the council discussing these concerns. I appreciate the Wood Pocket Tuck for bringing up these concerns and other members of the public. I think it's an even better project that, in our opinion, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and Mr. Mendel's report is in the record that discusses that in detail. Unless there's any questions, that's really all I wanted to add.
Okay. Thanks, Joel. Okay. I guess, do we want to consider closing the hearing and setting a date, folks?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and set a date, place, and time for discussion and vote.
Decision.
For decision.
Lisa, I know Meredith's out there. Yep. Second. Close that.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we do.
Sylvia gives you a second.
Thank you. So you have, your next regularly scheduled council meeting is October 19, and then you have one more regularly scheduled council meeting on November 2.
Well, as far as the transcript, you probably have to go to the second, right?
Right. Correct. Yep.
Yep. Second it is, I guess.
Can you talk to Meredith?
Meredith?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, yes, that first transcript will be going out in a couple of days, and this one, I'll get right on it, so I could get it out in probably 10 days.
Great.
So you'll make the second, you'll be able to make the second?
I can make the second.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I guess we have a date and time and all that good stuff.
We need votes.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing, and we've set a date for decisions to signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Four to zero, that passes. All right. I guess we're all set, folks.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.